To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the little flag of the state of Mexico, the legal symbol of a perfect friendship among the united cultures.
And then Kara Cook for our invitation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here today for this commission to make vital decisions for Eddie County with your guidance. We pray for the safety of all first responders, our law enforcement, fire and EMT personnel, as they put their lives on the line every day for the citizens of our county. Thank you for all the blessings you have given to each of us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, from here.
Good morning, commissioners, and good mornings to those who have joined us here in the commission chambers this morning. First item of business would be public comments and announcements. Are there any from the audience this morning? Seeing none, I haven't received any written comments, so we'll move on to the trailing agenda. First item is approve the commission meeting minutes from February twenty first, twenty twenty three.
Does anybody have any changes? I'll move. Do you have them?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Bowen?
Stain.
Cordova?
Epstein.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Got Carrie's. Expense approval report for February twenty twenty three. Any comments? Comments? Okay. Uh, call for a motion.
Seven.
A motion and a second, call for the vote.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, item two is the treasurer's report is there in the packet for your information. Um, the next item of business is the January twenty twenty three revenue report from Ms. Roberta.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. So for the January, uh, revenue report, uh, we received a little over four million dollars in gross receipts tax for the month, which puts us a little over thirty-one million dollars for the fiscal year. For oil and gas, we received a little over ten point four million dollars. The reason why this was so high is because we did receive, um, a large equipment check as well for the month of January. Obviously not as large as December's. Um, so far we've collected seventy-six million in oil and gas production and equipment overall. Uh, this was for the business month of October, so we were running about twenty-one million barrels and about eighty-four dollars. Um, gas went down to about five dollars for this business activity month, but we're still running about a hundred and twenty-one million units.
Now, and so gas was, I mean, oil was holding steady at eighty-four dollars?
For, for that business month, yeah.
For October, yeah.
So.
It has, it slightly went off a little bit for these next couple of months, so that's what I was just going out to say. I think you're gonna see the oil production be around the seven million dollar mark now. I know we're up in the high nines, um, eights. I think you're gonna see it hang around about seven million now.
The, the volume is consistent, but the prices for those months were, uh, dropped down into the mid to upper seventies.
Where's it at today?
This morning it was at eighty dollars and change. Um, it's been fluctuating in the upper seventies for the last couple of weeks.
Good.
So with that, I was saying?
Gas price goes down to two bucks and change, so.
Really?
Right.
Why that feeling?
Um, it's, it's.
Supply?
There's ample supply. It's the getting it out, exporting it. The, the demand in Eastern Europe has, I won't say subsided, but it's been, it's been met. They haven't consumed as much as was anticipated of liquefied natural gas, and so that market has softened. That's dropped the, the wellhead prices somewhat because the demand has diminished somewhat, but it's all speculation and forecast.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. That's, that's all that I have.
Any questions? 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 Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
I'm on the motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item of business is budget versus actual for January revenue and expenses, Ms. Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, for the month of January, uh, kind of the same old story, but it's a good same old story. Uh, it's showing we're at about a hundred and seventeen percent collected overall for revenue. Um, that number's closer to a hundred and thirty-three percent collected, uh, without transfers. And, uh, for the expenses, I know it shows about sixty-one percent, but that number's probably closer to about thirty-eight percent without transfers overall for the county. Uh, of course, general fund is still, um, way over the hundred percent mark on revenue collected. It's at about a hundred and thirty-eight percent. And for expenses, it is showing about eighty-one percent expense. However, obviously the transfers, most of the transfers lie in general fund. So we're more about forty-six percent expense in general fund, which is obviously way under the fifty-eight percent mark that we should be at. So, doing really well.
Questions? Questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberta, thank you, commissioners. The next item of business, uh, is the approve of the Safety Net Care Pool Certification from Public Funds for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Third quarter, Ms. Veronica.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So, it's time for the recertification of third order, the Safety Net Care Pool Fund.
Not my favorite. We shell out one point eight million dollars for safety net care pool, which we're obligated to do by the state, but we don't necessarily see the, the benefits of those funds applied in our communities, but that's just my opinion.
I think we can get around it.
You can't.
It's state law.
You need to study that.
Yeah, and they make us do this certification because they wanna make sure there's not other monies being utilized, things of that nature. I mean, it's.
Is this number going up? I mean, or is it averaging around?
Um, it varies sometimes.
It's tied to grocery receipts.
It is.
Yeah, it's tied to the GRT.
So there's a, there's an enacted mill rate that, uh, an enacted one-eighth. One-eighth, it goes with this.
But basically, we're having to send that to the state and then we're having to spend our own money to take care of our own problems.
Yes, sir.
That kinda sucks.
I, I concur with your opinion, Commissioner.
Just real quick, yes, it's a one-eighth and a one-twelfth.
That's right.
And they used to be in the indigent fund, but we moved into general fund essentially so we could capture that surplus and just only transfer what's needed. And it is based on grocery receipts tax, based on the prior year. So, the higher the GRT is from the prior year, the higher the payment is.
So next year could be a killer.
I've been expecting it to be higher.
But Ms. Veronica does a good job of making sure that we're compliant with the statute and we send our money, our money up to the state.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion, it's like a call for the vote.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Veronica, thank you, commissioners. The next item of business is, um, Chief Hutchinson is traffic control for US eighty-two for the Navaho refining turnaround.
Chairman, commissioners, good morning. Uh, the Eddie County Sheriff's Office is requesting to assist Navaho with their turnaround. Uh, about every three to five years, they do a shutdown and they go in and they start cleaning up the plant. Um, so about, anywhere between nine and twelve hundred employees that come from outside of the county to Artesia. So, they need some traffic control assistance during shift changes. Um, it is a twenty-seven thousand six hundred and then it will be reimbursed through them after the completion.
And you guys have done this before.
Yes, so, I agree, they, they said between twenty-four, forty-eight months usually, but every two, four years.
And it's, is it a, generally they're like seven to ten day turnarounds? I mean, they don't like to have them down very long, so I don't know what the duration of this one is.
This one starts, they're, they're expecting to start on the twenty-seventh of March and they're, they're expecting it to end by about the fourth of April. They try to do it within a seven to ten day period and then it go a little longer.
Just depends on what they find.
Any other questions? Questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move. Yes, second.
Have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you, chief. Um, the next item of business is, uh, approval of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four funds for the purchase of an armored vehicle for the sheriff's department. Go ahead, chief.
Chairman, commissioners, um, we are looking to purchase a Bearcat. It's an armored vehicle from Linco, they are a sole source provider. Um, the reason we're requesting this now instead of, in the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four budget here is we're gonna be able to lock in that, that price right for these. Um, currently, the sheriff's office utilizes an AMRAP, which is a very large armored vehicle, and it has had some problems since about twenty twenty. It pretty much been out of service. In that timeframe, we've got thirty-seven SWAT callouts. Uh, very difficult for us to, to do a, any kind of tactical operations without armored vehicles. So, um, we've looked, we've got the price codes and we're looking at purchasing that vehicle.
What all will the armored vehicle do, chief?
Uh, it's, it's gonna provide any kind of, uh, mobile armor for us to, uh, it'll help us with, you know, any kind of movements. It actually, it's a safety precaution for all of our, all of the regional team that's involved.
Okay, does it have capabilities like if you had to breach a building or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's, there's an item on the, on the front of it that allows to do that, so.
And this, this is in essence a, a letter of commitment, um, by the commission for, the monies will be taken from and expended in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
It'll be part of our budget then.
Yes, it'll be included in the budget, but in order to lock in the pricing, we need the commitment to expend those funds now for that budget that'll come before you in the next month.
How's the life of a vehicle like this?
It's anywhere between eight to ten years, depending on usage.
Hopefully we don't have to use it.
Hopefully we keep them updated.
Well, it takes us about anywhere between eight to twelve months to actually receive the item from the date that we purchase.
Okay, what is the price, total price?
Uh, this is gonna go, it's a three, three hundred and twenty-six thousand seven seventy, sorry.
Yeah. Just to get that in the record.
Uh, the, the one that you said you're having trouble with, is that the one that was donated to us a while back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sure maintenance on that is quite expensive too.
It is, and it, and it takes us, um, the downtime on it, you know, can vary. And we're actually looking at moving out of that one and going to another one from a different county, uh, as those are part of a, uh, federal grant. So that's given, so we're trying to look at that so that we can have that. At that point, one of those items, whichever one, uh, will be placed in the, uh, Artesia, the other one will be in Carlsbad for faster response times.
Good. Any questions over here?
Out of curiosity, what is the maintenance problem that's got you down? Is it engine trouble, electronic trouble?
We, we've had anywhere from a fuel line, I mean, to tires and brakes. I mean, it's a very large item, uh, heavyweight, so it's just very difficult for us to find those.
Yeah, at one point there was transmission problems, it was a struggle.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second, can I call for the vote?
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Okay.
Next is, uh, over hire for two firefighter EMT positions, Chief Mac.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we're requesting to take our two open positions, which is the battalion chief and a captain position, and over hire them as firefighters and then promote internally within the next six to eight months as we have people that are on probation, but they are demonstrating the ability to do the position, so they're in their task book phase now, which will take them about anywhere from six months to a year to complete, so.
So we're not asking to add any more positions, but because those two positions were designated as battalion chief and captain, ours, careful how to say this, 'cause they are whack me. But because they're designated as those positions, defined as those positions, they get squeamish about backfilling them with, without commission approval. So, the number of positions will remain the same, but with, this over hire will allow us to fill with firefighters and then when the existing firefighters, 'cause those, these positions have been open or out posted since, um, last fall, July. And so, we, we were fortunate, we have been able to fill some, but we do have some internal candidates that when they finish their certifications, um, and tests, they, they could be considered for those roles. So, we'd like to fill the firefighter roles and then we'll promote them, we'll still have the same total number of positions. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Questions?
I like the idea of promoting from within, you know, and kind of working with these individuals and rewarding them for good work, so I'm a part of that.
I, I don't have any questions, I just, I, I, I won't say anything else. I, I, I think this is a good idea. I don't understand why we have to do this. It just makes sense to do it and be done, but that's fine.
We're working on that.
Yeah, we can fix it. Because I mean, obviously we want, want it to be filled, we want things to go quickly, and I don't wanna miss anybody. And if we miss somebody because we have to have this in a meeting, that would be a bummer, so. I wanna make sure we remove quickly and efficiently, so.
Exactly. Commission, go on.
I'm good.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Seven. Second.
Have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, chief, thank you, commissioners. The next item of business is the resolution and agreement consent portion of the agenda.
Okay, do I have any questions or any items that need to be separated? On this side. Okay, do I have a motion to accept?
Seven.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, call for the vote.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, moving on, the next item of business is the elected official on department updates. Shut the front door. Wow, all right, let's go.
Oh, no.
You said you weren't talking.
No one else came up for sure.
Where's your tie?
It's all right.
You can, you can speak if you wish.
Oh, that's all right. We'll just, we'll make it longer.
And the sad part is he came with his shirt bugged up.
I can't take it all the way, everyone.
Go ahead, say something. Now you come up here, disrupted everything.
Wouldn't be a pretty meeting.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, just a quick update on what we've got going on around the county. We're starting our, uh, chip seal season, we're gonna be out on Sugar and, uh, Square Lake Road in the north. Um, we've also have our fog seal program that's gonna start up here with the weather getting a little warmer. Um, so everything we chip sealed, um, in the fall will be getting fog sealed this spring. So, it's kind of a, if you get called, we always have several that, um, have concerns driving through the wet oil and kinda tell them mind the traffic control, we do what we can to keep them off of it. Um, down in the south, what we're gonna be chip sealing and they're starting the prep is the stand pipe and Hildago subdivisions. I know we've had a few calls with, uh, um, concerns over the PSA we put out, but that's where those are gonna be, is several of our local roads in those two areas. Um, we've also are starting our prep on East Fiesta and that should finish up here in the next couple weeds along with, um, Haroon and Dogtown. Those are going around all the way through and that'll be chip sealed here within about the next month as we get the temperature, but we're gonna go ahead and start prep right now. Um, we do have the West Loop that is currently closed off at Lee Street. Um, we haven't had near the backlash that I was expecting over that, but that is moving along well and intend to have that open by the PSA of, that's April seventh, so. Um, moving right along, we've also had several days here with the wind that, uh, we've had to close the landfill. That's, that's been an ongoing challenge that we're trying to stay on top of. Um, but you know, it's a trashy situation, situation, so we're. There you go. All right.
Any questions for Mr. Duncan?
Now that you're up here, hey, I see you, a deal a couple days, maybe a week's ago, I forgot to follow up. County Road two twenty-two, I don't know where that is, but it's off eighty-two.
Two twenty-two is, um, I do names, not numbers, but it's over there by two oh six. We've, we, we went off and paved that one here, um, a few years ago, I think that's Empire Road, maybe. It ties in right there to, um, I think Hagerman cut off for one of those, but that's been one that, that's a high traffic that we went in and paved and it ties into a chip seal right there, 'cause what they do is they come off the highway on that short road and then go off onto a loose road.
So with all of that, I mean, with, with, on the pull off, could that be, I, I didn't go drive yet and that's my fault, but. They said as soon as you get off eighty-two, it kinda gets pretty rough pretty fast.
Yeah, that, that's one.
Could that be state?
They, they, at the angle that comes off eighty-two, they usually take it at speed and that's kind of the, the dip off and that's why we ended up paving it. But we did send Joe out there to look at that last week and we'll, we'll have that fixed. I mean, he, he's on it and we're, we're addressing it.
Awesome.
So, I know we've got a few others that have been reported to the county manager, um, that we're gonna address. We have a few options on how we're gonna try to get out there with our remaining budget that we have and, um, and get those addressed within this fiscal year, so.
And we are gonna have Fiesta done?
Yes, yes. That'll be one that's definitely gonna be prepped and done here within the next couple weeks, so.
Sugar, it's two twenty-two.
Oh, well, there you go. Names, not numbers. Say that a lot. But even names say.
It was a numbered name, sorry.
Names, not numbers. It's a, that's one that they're on as a schedule with the reports, that's, they're coming.
I've, I've noticed some of these like electronic signs out here, like talking about wire construction that's gonna start tomorrow, is that ours, the county's?
Out.
Just right here?
I think those are Mr. Hooper's on, um, six oh five on that, on that side. We have some that are out on this area, but the ones that are out here, I think that'll be on the six oh five starting up.
Tomorrow.
That's issue.
But I don't think those are, message boards, those are the contract.
It should be the AMDOTT for the traffic signals. That, that actual construction, uh, I just talked to the mic, constructors got that bid and they're supposed to actually start breaking ground like a community.
Yeah, I'd just like to see him out, you know, um, preparing people.
That does bring another question, I'm Neil Road, I, I think, sounds like we've got a pretty favorable number for that traffic signal.
With the study that we did, talking to, uh, DOT, we did get a favorable number, we're waiting for a conceptual, um, layout and the engineered estimate to go back and talk, sit down with you and Byron and DOT and, and see where that kinda stands, but, um, that, we're gonna get a favorable outcome on that. They said it's more than warranted even with the upcoming potential development, so.
And you're gonna push for my deal, right, stop signs and Malika?
Well, of course, sir.
Thank you.
You act like I'm coming to ask you for a job here. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Roberta?
I just, really quick, I just wanted to let you guys know, you know, we're working on the budget process for the new fiscal year. Uh, the department heads have sent in all their requests, so, um, trying to get all that wrapped up and, um, so Al and I can meet tomorrow. Hopefully we'll be meeting with any of the department heads late this week, early next week. Our goal is to have something to by the next commission meeting. Uh, we're hoping to do our budget workshop early and on the twenty-first, um, I don't believe we'll be able to approve the interim budget at that time. We're pretty early this year, the state's website's not even open for me to post in there, so, um, but we hope to get you guys something to do our budget workshop, um, on the twenty-first. One thing that'll, you'll see new in this new fiscal year budget is the consolidation of all the fire service funds, uh, because we're gonna be consolidating the fire excise and fire funds and the contribution donation funds. Uh, we're gonna be going from about forty-five separate, different funds to three, so that'll be really nice.
Wow.
Streamline and efficiency.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thanks, Roberta.
You're bringing something on that consolidation, just so that we can look it over and see.
Sure. What would you like to see?
Just wanna see what we're consolidating into what.
Sure.
So, so just a quick overview, the, the umbrella is, there were as many as three separate line items for each, um, volunteer district. And with the change in the organization and the, uh, desire to have everything, um, come under the leadership umbrella for, um, consistency and continuity, we got approval from the state, um, Fire Marshal's Office to allow that so that instead of having eleven or twelve independent and different allocations and approvals, they're now under one umbrella that can be managed by, uh, the county fire and rescue team for all of those elements. It's a much more efficient accounting process. It allows the money to be applied, those monies to be applied in the most prioritized areas. It allows us to be consistent as we manage resources around the county.
How's that affect you, Josh?
Yeah, it actually helps us sometimes because right now we, we get small allocations from the state per district to be utilized towards those stations, equipment, apparatus, so we're always constricted and have to reach more into fire excise, which has built a large rollover over the years because the chiefs never use the money really, so now we can take them, we're gonna focus it to our buildings and our properties and be able to pick three or four facilities a year and bring them all up to speed and get them on a good rotation between facilities and public works to keep the asphalt, uh, the, the stations up and keep them nice.
So this was a fire and rescue recommendation and it's consistent with the overall plan that we put together in how to move this forward to better serve the, the county.
We started with that, but it was a fire rescue.
Sorry, Commissioner.
And it's also gonna be helping on the purchases of items as well too, just like, uh, I think some of the commissioners have brought it up in the past. Now that they'll be in one fund, over one umbrella, um, everything can be consolidated when purchasing, whether it's, you know, uniforms, hoses, equipment, stuff like that.
Even apparatus, right? So then, instead of each entity, we've gotta do this.
Yeah, we had to wait.
Absolutely, and so now we've, we've reviewed the, the fleet, we've prioritized the needs in the fleet and we've identified what, what would be, um, needed to move or donate to other counties and what the overall needs are for larger apparatus and where best to deploy them so that the responses from the full, full-time paid staff can be what they need to be with the appropriate apparatus and overall improve the response time and therefore the ISO rating, which translates back to savings on insurance for the citizens.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Chief Mac.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, just a couple of updates. We had a forty-six point one acre fire the other day out on George Shute, but at the same time, we had a fire on the roadside on sixty-two one eighty, so I wanna thank the sheriff's office for blocking the road, Carlsbad for sending out a brush truck to the big fire in the Beal Bend as well, and then the public works also sent a truck from the landfill to help us with water supply on the roadside fires, so. Went really smooth, we had a, a pretty significant.
Went really smooth, we had a a pretty significant accident on thirty-one the other morning, our guys got there, were able to give a scene size up, secure the scene, evaluate all the patients. And conduct extrication before anybody else arrives, so the patient was ready to be loaded and was transported pretty quick from the scene by Carl's Bad, so. We're definitely seeing the effects and our uh overall scene time average for structured fires, tank batteries used to be five to eight hours or more. We're seeing units on scene and clearing by about an hour and a half and back in service, so. We're definitely seeing a big improvement on our side, so.
And and part of that is part of that ha- now having a facility in in the loving area.
It's just, yeah, the quicker response in general is is really helping to mitigate the problem before it gets too big, so.
That's good to hear.
To Jared, uh obviously we're we're pretty close to the twenty-one, so where are they in Artesia?
They're at Station Two, which is on the north side, the new building that we constructed a couple of years ago right there in Cottonwood.
So we have sleeping places in there? Okay.
Yeah, we took and modified some office space to.
But is there still the hope to be over or is it by tumbleweed, or I mean are we gonna have a building?
Yeah, that's that's the objective, so it's more personnel friendly, cause our stations are all built for volunteers, so they're offices, we're having to make some modifications.
So we have that property purchased, there was an op- potential opportunity to maybe look at an existing property and. And get into that, but um that property moved quickly and we didn't have the opportunity to.
Well, I noticed there's a property for sale right next to uh where the where your department is, right next to it, just went for sale. And that's why I was curious, I didn't know if y'all had looked at that to see if.
No, I haven't seen one.
Yeah.
We'll get with you.
Is it like a little house or something, I don't know what comes with it, it's not the big shop, it's in between those two things, so.
Yeah, but definitely we're seeing.
Well, and on the tumbleweed, you guys have already approved, we've already purchased the land for that station, so that's already done, we are in the architecture phase on that station, so.
And the architecture phase is. This is probably the wrong term, but it's modular in the sense that that same set of plans can be utilized in locations. In location and it could be expanded if it needs an additional bay or it can be pulled back if that's not required, but. One set of plans and and then off we go, so.
It's like a prefab.
Yeah, so basically we can walk into the guy and that was one of the things we attached Trent with is. We wanna be, if we need to go eight bays, we can go eight bays, if we need to go one bay, we can go one bay, but it pretty much standardizes our way out of the station, so it's always the same.
And Trent's been very, very helpful in that process from his experience and and contact, so. Uh I think we're gonna wind up with a really good product. It it's not a modular in the sense of prefab, but it's something that could be fabricated quickly, reasonably quickly. Construction stays tough, it's quick, but um but that same same uh.
Can easily be expanded and contracted without an overall change.
Right.
It's also circle K. They've got the same building everywhere, some are bigger, some are smaller, but it's the same building, makes it quicker to build.
Exactly. And you don't have to go out multiple times.
So as Roberto was saying, that brings that consistency to where if I'm a firefighter from up here, but I happen to be down there, I can go to the bay, I know where everything is, it's all consistent with everyone else, I think that's, I'm so glad we're finally getting.
And the trucks are that way.
Yeah, so we're 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 in the process of building the trucks that way, so, cause what we've seen is the first engine will arrive and if they're not from that district or whatever, they're running back ten trucks to go get the tool, that's right there in the same truck, they just don't know where it's at, so.
So we're we're working and standardizing all of that with the the apparatus, the paid paid staff and and uh it's it's coming together really, really well.
And then we're also working on our warehouse to be able to keep spare supplies, that way we're not waiting six months till eighteen months for something to be ordered that we can just go grab off the shelf, cause we have five extra now to save. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Any others now that the floodgates have opened? Just kidding, you all have enough. It's all Jason's fault, isn't it? It's so far. Well, that's fine, this is good information, any others? If not, we'll go to the uh next item, which is legislative update, as you know, session is just. It's like, you know, starts out as like a washing machine, where now we're in the spin cycle and it's just going around and around and around just fast and furious. I read this morning that um. Omnibus tax bill had been had passed House Tax and Rev. An initial tax proposal came out, House Bill three sixty-seven, which referred to pyramid pyramiding and whatnot. That was tabled the week before, but now they've used one of the dummy bills and they've all kinda dumped in. Now, from my understanding, and I haven't heard specifically from our lobbyists yet about what was in, but from what the news article said. The lobby or the pyramiding was not in that bill, um child tax credit, um rebates and some other things were in that tax package. It it'll probably go to the House floor soon, and if it passes the House floor, then the Senate will have a crack at it and see what, how that how that movie goes. There's a lot of legislation that is in motion right now and with this tax omnibus package was a a good example of. The legislators put these, they're referred to as dummy bills, they just put them in in the beginning before the the close of when they can submit bills. And then they use those to kind of dogpile, if you will, whatever they whatever is stuck in committee somewhere and try and get it into a larger package. And those become a real challenge to to stay abreast of and to stay on top of. There have been lots of um. Folks from our community, from the county, our lobbyists that have testified in committee meetings to try and. Bring some reason to some of the some of the legislation that's being considered. Um there's one that's up right now, House Bill five twenty, five twenty is that right? But it's the, it's a uh. It's tied to the. The sponsor wants to redefine the OCD, the Oil Conservation Department Division, for their own purposes of environmental protection. And it is just, so what you'd have is a is you'd have a. Uh a uh self-appointed board oversee the OCD and it's 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 kind of madness, it's really not good for any industry. It's it's not just oil and gas, it's any industry, any business in the state, these, this is the, this is the workaround for the Green Green Amendment Bill. Um where started out as any citizen could sue for. Yeah. Right, well now, they're gonna try and use oversight of the OCD to try and influence that opportunity. And again, there's just, there's there's so many things going on, but working with our lobbyists who. S three sixty has a large footprint there with lots of customers, including the county, uh New Mexico counties and the agenda. Okay, so um but the, all of those efforts are. Continue to be a challenge because of the the differences in numbers on not just the committees, but the overall houses. Uh in the legislature, what gets through and what what doesn't, so. Um this wraps up uh March seventeen or eighteen, so there's two weeks left. And during that time, the pace will become more and more furious. There there's a fair amount of legislation that's kinda in limbo that is uh related to different gun bills. The governor has threatened a special session if she doesn't get the output that she believes she wants from those. Paid family leave, I think is continuing to move forward, um we talked a little bit about the tax bill. Also moving ahead is the pay for legislators to have a, to go from the, I guess unpaid legislation, let. No pay for the legislature, just the per diems, to a full-time or a paid legislative. Organization um that may that may require a vote from the public as an amendment to the constitution. We really appreciate our NMC affiliate and and the the different organizations within those affiliates, I know. The county clerk, Ms. Cook, is is headed up to Santa Fe to testify um in opposition of some of the bills that are up there, so. I know Commissioner Bowen and others have testified, so. If we if we, and I've written multiple emails to different committee staff and and. If if they don't hear our voice, they assume everything's swell and wonderful, sometimes even if they do hear our voice, it's like. But if you don't speak up, you don't, it it doesn't count, right, so um I appreciate all the folks that have done that. In all of the organizations across the county, cause it's not just one individual, it's many individuals and that that does make a difference. Those, when it gets to in the right hands, those messages have have meaning and impact, so thank you. Any questions about the session, I'll do my best to answer, if not, I'll get some feedback from uh S three sixty on that. All right, let's move on then, the travel request consent agenda. Any questions on the travel? Commissioner Cordova? Do I have a motion to approve? Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote?
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. There is no emergency business today. The next item would be legislators or elected officials and legislators are all up in the roundhouse. Any elected officials? All right, seeing none, the next item would be county manager comments. I spoke a little bit about uh the legislative session and all that's involved there. We have been working with um Ms. Roberto, the the budget process that we've initiated and implemented is uh. I think we're very pleased with where we are right now with all the submissions from the departments, um I think. Our initial review is that. We should have a what's referred to as a surplus budget, but that will, we Robert and I will still review that, that's kind of the initial blush, is everything's been brought together and she's compiled it. We'll review that um tomorrow, we'll talk to departments and s- see if there are any adjustments or make sure we understand all of those requests and requirements. We have. So I received a. A notification, if you will, from the United States Department of Interior about being a um. Cooperating agency or participating agency in in their solar development plan on federal lands. We have, we have done, to do that, you have to petition and you have to provide your rationale and whatnot. We've done that in other uh areas like grazing and different things, you know, when the. BLM updates, go through their NEPA process and updates their resource management plans, where it affects. Cause there's so much federal land in in Eddie County, we try and make sure that we're on top of all of those, so we'll consider whether or not the county would um participate in this. Assessment of solar development on federal lands as a cooperating agency to make sure that. What would be our upside in that? The upside would would be being able to express an opinion about. How that uh what the environmental impact for that or the 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 aerial impact for that would be within the county. If the BLM or as the BLM incorporates that uh potential impact into their resource management plan. The downside to that is when you do that, you have to provide a lot of review and feedback to those committees. What the standing gives you is the opportunity to have that input ahead of the public comment periods and try and shape that um. Plan based on your uh input before. That draft gets modified and then sent to the public for public comment periods, which are. Could be sixty days, could be eight hundred and twenty days, could be a year, right, depending on the the s- the size and implication of the particular resource management plan. So it it just gives the county a little better standing, a little earlier look at what's going on and the opportunity to have input and be heard. Again, depends on the influence of the administration as to where that. Portion of the resource management plan is going, how the influence from the administration is overriding in how those resource management plans get vetted. In Eddie County, we've not. The amount of uh solar development in the county is, I mean, it's not been a, it's not been a priority for our purposes. There are other industries and multiple industries that provide more and better opportunity than what we've seen so far from solar development. That's not, that's not to disparage solar development in any way, um but what we've seen so far has been. Businesses or opportunists that are looking for a break in that development. For their gain, not necessarily the county's gain, whereas these other industries, you know, are bringing more jobs, more 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 local input. So it just hasn't been a priority for us, there are some counties where it is a priority, cause they don't necessarily have some of those other opportunities, and so. One of the challenges um that I personally have with that development is the footprint of those. Solar developments relative to other energy development, the. The net effect, the net energy delivered for that footprint doesn't compare. There you go, exactly my problem. So. How do you make that known in that resource management plan and because for s- for for resource management plans, surface impact is is the primary. Issue on any on any uh industry development. And so when that footprint is that large for the amount of output that you get from it compared to other energy sources. Man, you you gotta make sure that the the playing field is level and consistent. Yeah, you see these, it's just acres and acres of these solar panels and the impact to the environment on that is tremendous, you know, you talk. They get out there and they talk about the prairie chicken and all that kind of stuff, when you take out the habitat for the prairie chickens or whatever, I mean, doesn't that have the same impact on? May maybe we could put prairie chicken coops on the bottom of the solar panels, I don't know, maybe.
It's all about the warm fuzzy film that you get from seeing the solar panels versus. Oak Jackson.
I just, I I just see acres of those suckers and there's.
I just, I, I just see acres of those suckers and there's nothing that's environmentally friendly about that. You take an habitat like.
Yeah.
Everything.
No grazing, no prairie chickens, no oil field.
And I was gonna say for my comments, but that is one of my questions is what you just said. So how many acres realistically would you have to take offline to make an actual impact with these solar panels?
Oh.
Well, how many acres were just like one wind turbine?
So one wind turbine is probably. Depending on the size, probably sixty acres, forty to sixty acres. So that's, that's a one well unit spacing for most. Forty acre spacing is a pretty common development spacing. So one wind turbine today. They're, they're rated between two and five megawatts per turbine. The operating efficiency, you bring that down to about fifty percent because of the availability of wind and the other things that go with it. But that's, that's kind of a general, a generally recognized, uh, efficiency is fifty percent. So it's generating between one and two and a half megawatts per turbine. For an example. The Arizona Public Service Facility and the San Juan Generating Facility in San Juan County. Those two plants, um, they, they had multiple, uh, multiple generators, but collectively they generated about. One was twenty-three hundred and one was twenty-seven hundred megawatts. APS San Juan. And they each had four to six generators, uh, coal-fired generator. So. You had the coal mine and you had the two plant sites. But generate twenty-two hundred megawatts. At one to two megawatts per turbine. Your hundred thousand acres at forty acres, I mean, it's, it's staggering. And solar's, solar's worse per, per acre footprint.
A section of, of solar panels replaces how much, how many barrels of oil?
Oh. So I.
Get your engineering.
Yeah, well, so, so I did a calculation on twenty megawatts of power, um, from, and that's about, um. That was over two hundred acres for the twenty megawatt panel array. One, and that, that's twelve hours a day, right? Cause average sunlight, daylight or dark, right? So, so twenty, twenty, twenty megawatts, half of the time. One five million cubic foot of day gas well, so five million cubic feet a day can generate twenty megawatts of power twenty-four seven. For as long as it can, that well can produce five million cubic feet of gas. And that five million cubic feet of gas wells off and on a, an eighty acre spacing. So, you know, you could even have three wells, three eighty acre wells to, to make five million cubic feet a day. Um, so each one could make, you know, one and three quarter seventeen hundred and fifty MCF a day. And generate the same footprint or same power as a two hundred and forty acre solar, solar array generating twenty, twenty megawatts. So, so the energy impact hydrocarbon versus solar or wind is.
Really not comparable.
It's not, it's not, and that's, that's one of the, the misunderstandings or not, not adequately represented. When these are considered, um. This is, you know, there, there are people who would argue that, you know, the, the flaring and the emission escape, you know, methane water. Have an impact on air quality and, and contribute to greenhouse gas. And, and they, and they do, right? I don't think they do to the scale that's being advertised by some of the media and, and others. But when you look at the energy impact per unit, there's absolutely no comparison. And the challenge is. It's not a binary operation, it's not on or off. Renewable energy, you're not gonna shut everything else off and turn all of that on. Renew, renewable energy today, and even you go out to twenty forty, twenty fifty. Doesn't have the capacity or the infrastructure to replace any of what's currently being generated through, uh, conventional resources. The challenge is gonna be in twenty forty, twenty fifty, that the global demand is gonna require all of it. All of it. So these desires to. As the president quoted, I will only need this for another ten years. That's just, that's just a lie, it's not true. There's absolutely no science, fundamental, anything behind that. So. I attended a literacy, um, meeting yesterday with Commissioner Bowen. The keynote speaker there is a, an economist, his organization, um, and. His comment, and I've heard it from other companies. In the United States, we're, um. We're very ill-informed and somewhat biased because of our energy. Well, yeah, I mean, our lifestyle, we've become accustomed to having an energy abundance. The majority of the population of the world does not enjoy that same lifestyle. And it's a consequence of lack of energy opportunity. Not to have a dissertation about global economy and global lifestyle, but. There's a significant portion of the world that is still on biofuels and we think of biofuels as soybean oil coming out of the, the Sinclair. It's the old novel plant, whatever their new name is now, right? They added that biofuel plant, that's soybean oil, right? That's what we think of biofuel. I'm talking about wood, dung. That's biofuel in a large portion of the world. And so our arrogance of. Nobody else can have that lifestyle, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of this here, that, that's ridiculous. Everybody should have that opportunity. And so that energy requirement, as those nations become more and more sophisticated in their energy capability. The demand goes up and up and up. And so that supply has to come from somewhere, so. We need our, we need our governments to stop, um, trying to undermine and, and demonize. A particular industry for their, for their fantasy of, oh, look what I've done, right? I'm, I'm green and I'm beautiful. That's just not it, that is absolutely just not it. And if you look at what those industries have done over the course of time. Those folks tend to be the smartest people in the room and yet we won't invite them to the table to resolve those questions and issues to address that. Everything they've been able to accomplish has been econom- economically driven. That's not what's going on in the new, the new renewables arena. So until we find that balance and do it all, it's gonna continue to be a challenge, so. Uh, that was way more than you bargained for him, so. Anyway, so we may or may not go with the BLM deal. Thanks Commissioner Carlson. Anyway, um, we have been working with the, uh, an architect firm that we've, we've contracted. Looking at the feasibility and design for a detention facility, courts facility. I have an opportunity to look at some property that is adjacent to current county property that we may have an opportunity to. Acquire, but we'll, we need commission approval to do that, so I'll get that in front of you guys, ladies, um, for consideration. But I think trying to wrap up that contiguous acreage would be beneficial for the county and the plan movement. If you decide to move forward with that opportunity, so. Not, last but not least, uh, we did receive a, a very kind note from, um, Lakeview Christian, uh, Living. For the contribution that the county made to a need that they had, so, uh, I'll share that letter with you folks and. But they were very appreciative of, we used some of our, uh, ARP money to accomplish that. Similar to other things we've done with that money supporting community needs, so I'll shut up, sorry. Any questions? Commissioner Bowen? Oh, one last thing. I did receive several calls, um, about, um. Carlsbad School District, uh, bond. And this bond request, and it's a mail-in ballot, um. The mill rate on that bond doesn't change. It's an extension of the current mill rate for an additional term. And in my opinion, if you look at what's been accomplished with those monies from that existing bond. It would seem prudent to continue that extension to continue to accomplish the needs that, that this particular school district has. In developing the, the capital assets that they have and that they need, so. The, the, the mill rate doesn't change, it's an extension of the existing one. I think the school district and Superintendent Washburn has done an excellent job in paying off the bonds that they've, they've put out. To complete the, the facilities that they have and they have additional need and this would just be an extension of that same, uh, that same bond and. Uh, I think that's important for folks to understand that the mill rate doesn't change, it's an extension and. They're, they're doing great things with the monies that they have, so I just wanted to make, make you aware of that. Now I'll shut up. County Commissioner comments?
Commissioner Cordova?
I don't have much, um, just appreciative of the work on our roads. I know that you've phased that out nicely with the weather and everything, Jason, and same for Wes and his, uh, projects that he's accomplishing. I'm really grateful for your feedback on legislative issues out. The comments that you've sent up have been very, um. Very informative of our position and what we offer to the state, so I'm very grateful that, um, you've taken the time to do that. And, um, really no, no other comments for me today.
I've got a couple, I just wanted to twist off of what you were talking about. The one question, cause I can never remember it, how much of, of our county is federal and state? Remind me again, it's a bunch?
Sixty-one percent is federal and twenty-one, twenty-two percent is state, twenty-one percent, that leaves eighteen percent private.
Okay, cause I think it's important for folks, I, I, I think it's important for us to have a seat at the table on those. Just like with the resource management plan, we've had a seat for quite some time. Now those plans are supposed to be updated, correct me, Cass, is it every twenty years? And ours is how old? I mean, we've been fighting on this resource since I've been on here.
Right.
And it was old then, uh, a- and I know we've got ranchers in the room, we've got all kinds of different folks in the room. I bet it would be interesting, we're so concerned about these wildlife lands, I think they're called, which is, which for those that don't know means nothing can be there. No road, no electrical line, nothing, wilderness, wilderness, thank you. Of course, the ones they're designating as wilderness have electrical wires and roads and so it kind of goes completely against what they're saying. But we're so worried about those and taking them away from ranchers who actually care for the land and take care of the land. And we're gonna possibly be interested in putting in solar panels that will take hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres to even make it. Dents the wrong word, to power our generator that just came on with gas. It might power that for a short period of time. And we're gonna take those away from folks that are stewards of the land, we're taking that from oil and gas, cause those things, those pump jacks are so ugly. I just drove to San Antonio last weekend, I hate wind turbines, cause I can see them for hundreds of miles. And I'm so glad that finally some folk take, in their little party, Democrats hate wind turbines. Because now whales are beaching themselves, right? So now they're bad too, so I'm curious what's gonna happen with it, where, where we're headed now. Because once we figure out solar panels are actually worse for the environment than oil and gas. And yet we'll have hundreds and hundreds of acres that did nothing, but now we're gonna have to dispose of them. Uh, we're so worried about coal mining because mining is horrible. Where does all that stuff for the solar panels and those, those ugly wind turbines come from? Mining. So again, it's, I said it last week and it's reiterate, or last time, like two weeks ago, it's reiterate what I said then. I'm so tired of this, oh, this is great for the environment, or this is a great gun bill. It doesn't solve the problem, nobody wants to really dig in and solve the problem, so you wanna talk nuclear, okay, cool. That might solve a problem, but oh, that's bad too. So really, we're gonna have to figure it out and if you look at true environmental climate statistics, America's the best. We're top notch, one of the top notch in what we, how we produce it and the pollution and you go compare it to some countries that have no reliable energy. And they're some of the worst, cause what you said, they burn dung, they burn wood, because that's how they survive. If we got them reliable energy, you wanna make a difference in climate, get those folks reliable energy like we have and all of a sudden we can help, help resolve the problem. The problem's not gonna be resolved, the ship has sailed. We're gonna have to learn to figure out how to deal with the climate and everything else, I, I fully understand that. I'm not one of these that say nothing's changing, I get it, it's changing. But the way we're fixing it makes absolutely no sense. And we have leaders at the state and federal level that just don't seem to get it. And they wanna appease people that aren't appeasable. This same group that was so excited with them two years ago with wind turbines, now hate them because of wind turbines. You're not gonna appease that group, they're mad at everything, everything. So what does it matter? Let's really work for folks and, and make life better for people that actually want life better and want to have things better, so. You know, I get really frustrated, especially since that resource management plan has been such an argument. And so many ranchers and farmers are gonna be affected by it and yet we're even having a discussion about taking another. Who knows how many acres offline for solar panels that don't do anything? And I guarantee you chickens and lizards are gonna hate them because it's gonna kill the habitat under them, it's ugly. There's nothing good about it, you can't run a cow on it, you can't, antelope aren't gonna run by it, where are the poor antelope gonna go? I don't know, but they're definitely not gonna walk through those things, so. You know, it's, it's shocking to me how stupid we act and we are when it comes to simple, simple solutions that we could. Could really make a difference in the world and actually fix them. But we're so, so worried about appeasing the group that will never, ever be happy. You could buy them a birthday cake and they're gonna be mad, they just don't care, so. It, it's an interesting, it's, yeah, exactly, whatever, they'll come up with something, so. It, it is disheartening, it's disheartening to see the bills that are flying through our legislative session, they don't do anything to help business. You know, the governor, we sat there and listened to her, how, how we're gonna help businesses and we're gonna diversify our economy. And we're gonna pass as many bills as we can to destroy that idea, so I'm not really sure what we're getting out of that. Um, I'm worried about the bills that are coming through because I do think it makes it harder for us to diversify our economy. Because businesses are gonna have a hard time wanting to locate here, uh, which hurts cities, hurts counties. Um, when we are trying to diversify our economy, because when they're passing these bills that feel good, we're the ones that have to figure out how to pay for the bills, so. I really wish there would be something passed up there that would show them the consequences of the bill on cities and counties, every bill that's passed. Because then maybe somebody would start paying attention to, oh, it is costing DeBaca County, there's not a big population there. They don't have the money to have a lot of cost. And we don't either, just because we're a successful county at the time, doesn't mean that we have endless amounts of money to continue to fund their stupidity. On things that aren't making a difference. So that's pretty frustrating, um. And I know that's a soapbox that I say too often, but it's just, it boggles my mind that we continue to go down the same roads we do. And, and we, we don't really have an interest in fixing anything. We don't have an interest in fixing the gun violence, we don't, it, it, we have zero interest, let's make things seem like we're doing something for it. We don't have an interest in fixing the gun violence, we don't, it, it, we have zero interest, let's make things seem like we're doing something for it. And we're not accomplishing a doggone thing for anybody. On a good note, state, state tournament start, I think the Artisia girls played at eight, I don't know, obviously, I was here, so I don't know how that went, but. Um, I know games start today, tomorrow, I know Carlsbad, I don't know if your boys went up there, I saw a picture of the, the girls team leaving, so. Now hopefully, hopefully our teams from this direction of the state will have great success and maybe bring a couple of blue trophies home for Artisia and Carlsbad. And uh, it's always fun to be the best, we're the best at everything else, we might as well be the best at sports and FFA and everything else we do, so. Folks out of Noe County and, and, and the city's in it, because, because we produce champions and we produce fighters and. Uh, that's what we expect, so, again, kinda like, sorry for the soapbox, but it's just so frustrating to hear the same nonsense over and over and over. And obviously the generator doesn't run the AC. So, you know. Folks, y'all think you got problems now, wait till your electric starts going out and the generator's not running an AC, so. That's all I got.
Okay, Commissioner Bowen.
Hi, just a spin-off of the, the, the wind turbine deal, uh, I was driving back from Albuquerque. Two weekends ago on Sunday when we had that great wind apocalypse, the ninety mile, ninety mile an hour winds. And as we were driving between Klein's Corners and Vaughn, they have all of those wind turbines there, not one of them was spinning. So, I don't know if the wind was blowing the wrong direction, but not one wind turbine was spinning, my wife actually took a picture, cause we thought it was comical. Couple of weeks ago I went to jail on a tour. It was eye-opening, I had this Hollywood view of, of how the jail operated and what, what took place. Warden Massengill took me through the ins and outs of everything, it was, it was truly eye-opening. One thing that I noticed was how much everybody there seemed to genuinely enjoy their job and took pride in what they're doing. It was, it, it was, it was very good for me to see, and I really appreciate it. Um, for the warden for taking his time, an entire afternoon to show me around, I appreciate that. Yesterday I attended the literacy convention, it was hosted by Superintendent Dr. Washburn. And I was very impressed by the keynote speaker, Dr. Perryman. He shared some alarming statistics, um, one of which was that one in three adults in the Permian read below an eighth grade level. My table had three people at it, myself, Al and uh Dr. Washburn, so I questioned my literacy. In, in all seriousness, um, literacy is a very big issue that, that deserves our attention, our respect, our awareness. Poor literacy, poor literacy is linked to crime, poverty, and a slew of other negative side effects. Which leads to the school bond mail-out ballots that were sent out on the first. Need to be returned by the twenty-eighth, either by mail or to the clerk's office. Like Al mentioned, this is phase two of this existing bond. These funds will be used to build a third middle school, our two existing middle schools in Carlsbad have eight hundred plus students in them. They're busting at the seams, the third one is, is necessary. It will also help to renovate Sunset Elementary School, to kinda go in line with what we've done up to this point. Most importantly, maybe not most importantly, but voters should know, we'll not raise taxes and. The current mill levy, mill levy rate will not change for property owners, so I would recommend a, a vote in support of that. Lastly, I want to congratulate Fabian Padilla, he is a former Carlsbad High School wrestler, he just, this past weekend won the. National Junior College NCAA Championship.
Good deal.
Sixty-four man bracket, he was the last one standing, so I wanna congratulate him, it's the first time. That we've ever had a national collegiate champion in wrestling from the city of Carlsbad, so I want to congratulate him. And I was fortunate enough to see him grow up wrestling, and it, it was pretty cool to see the, the culmination happen this past weekend. So he's a two-time All-American and now a national champion, um, so congratulations to him, and that's all I got.
I wanna back up a little bit on this energy, there's one thing that's missing from this whole conversation, and that's nuclear. In this modern era, that's the answer to all of it. I mean, we've got Holtech, they're fighting this tooth and toenail, bringing in renewable fuel and not run this by Al. We could use that fuel on a small reactor, and we could turn wrestler water and brine water into reusable. Water, maybe put it back in the river for protectors, or we could move over to Whip and put in a full nuclear power plant. On a couple thousand acres and power the whole blasted state in New Mexico. Uh, but it's missing from every conversation, you go over to Europe, France is doing just fine over there with their nuclear power, you go to. Germany where they're having all kinds of problems because of a blown-up pipeline, and they're refiring some of their nuclear plants. But here in New Mexico, you say nuclear and the greens all start pulling their hair out, and you talk about hating our guts. It doesn't matter what we do over here, there's an element of that crowd out there that it doesn't matter what we do. We fund the whole state in New Mexico with oil and gas and they still hate our guts down there. And that's just a simple matter of fact, and before I get too carried away, I'm gonna hush right there, so.
Okay, uh, talking about the, the state tournament and, and everything. Uh, one of the things that I hadn't thought about is there wouldn't be a state tournament if there wasn't. Cha- uh, Eddie and Lee Counting producing the monies to fund the education funds. There just wouldn't be, and nor would the, other schools have teams, now we might have our team, because we have the oil and gas right here, but. Uh, without oil and gas, none of those other teams would exist to compete against us. Uh, and Holtech, the one thing that I had, I had somebody call me the other day and talk about Holtech. And they were talking about, why, why do you wanna bring that nuclear stuff in, and, you know, the thing that I told them, I said. You know, this is a temporary facility, not only that, but Holtech also from the lunch that we went to. Wants to bring in a manufacturing uh facility that will manufacture these low-level generators. That will use those spent rods to power those generators, so it's not going to be. What are we gonna do with them in the future? We will have an alternative, and it'll be alternative energy, and it'll be something that's affordable, it makes common sense. And, so, yeah, we're gonna run into all those, all the people that are environmentalists and stuff. But, you know, sometimes people just have to have common sense, and that's what it is. That's all I have.
Thank you commissioners, um, we have no executive session today, our business would appear to be concluded.
We're done.